Good evening. The January 27, 2022 meeting of Longview City Council is now called to order. Tonight, our prayer and pledge will be led by Caleb Kimbrough. Caleb is a 14-year-old star scout from Troop 613 in Spring Hill. He's been extremely active in scouting for the last seven years in Cub Scouts and Boy Scouts. He's in the eighth grade at Spring Hill School and plays the trombone in the band. He's currently serving as Assistant Senior Patrol Leader in Troop 613. In a few months, he'll be joining Venture Crew 613. He's the son of Luke and Deanne Kimbrough of Longview and the younger brother of Eagle Scout Jacob Kimbrough. Caleb, thank you, sir. Please rise.
Please, please bow in prayer. Dear Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for everything you have given us. We also thank you for this beautiful city that we know as Longview and the fact that you give us the chance to improve it. Please, Lord, help our leaders to make good decisions according to your word. Lord, we ask you to do these things, but it is your will, not ours. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Caleb. Awesome job, my friend. We're now to employee recognition. Tonight, we're going to recognize Longview Fire Station 3A Shift. Tonight, the Longview Fire Department would like to present a unit citation award to the members of Station 3A Shift for their selfless service to a citizen in need during a structured fire on September 30, 2021. During the fire, the crew found a bed-bound citizen and got him safely out of the house. After the fire, the crew worked with the members of the American Red Cross to find a hotel that would allow the citizen to bring his hospital bed and then help transport the resident and his bed to the hotel. It was vital the citizen had his hospital bed as he was on oxygen and had a feeding tube and needed to keep his head elevated to breathe. Not everyone receiving this award tonight is here, but I want to go ahead and read their names. With us tonight, we have Captain Dusty Burks, Driver Engineer Chris Wilson, Firefighter Craig Barton, Captain Colby Beckham, Driver Bubba Perry, Firefighter Brad Brown. Those not with us are Driver Engineer Ricky Norman, Firefighter Josh Petticrew, and Captain Jonathan Cameron. These crews used their own personal vehicles to help transport the bed and had to move it piece by piece up to the second floor of the motel. It was the La Quinta Hotel on I-20. The fire was in 1100 block of Booker Street. So tonight, we want to recognize these employees and please come forward. It says I'm presenting y'all with an award, so I don't have anything. But you got it, chief? Okay, good. I just want to personally thank each one of you all for your service to this community, to the citizens that you go out and take care of every single day. Weather doesn't matter, time of day doesn't matter, how much sleep you've had doesn't matter, and what you risk doesn't matter. You all are heroes in our community, and I thank you very much. And to this gentleman, not only hero, you're an angel, a lifesaver. And so we thank you for that, and I appreciate you, and I hope you can do the good work that you're doing because Longview would not be the city that it is without you helping our citizens the way that you do. Thank you all very much. Very proud of you all.
Mayor, we're going to present each one of these firefighters with a unit citation award. So this is something that's very special and meaningful in our fire department. Not a lot of people get the opportunity to receive one of these.
Thank you, sir. Chief, stay right there.
Yes, sir.
Gentlemen, thank you. Appreciate you. Thank you, sir. We're at the police safety update. Tonight, our police update will be given by Assistant Chief Anthony Boone.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, Mr. Bonds. We will be kicking off our Project 365 starting in February. This we haven't done in a couple of years because of our good friend COVID. 2018 was our, we had East 80, and in 2019, we had the Estes Parkway Corridor. Didn't have this in 2020 or 2021, but we'll have it going for 2022. And our area this year is going to be the Birdie Park area out there on west side of town, just off Marshall Avenue, just north of Marshall Avenue there. See where that falls on our map. And this is a holistic approach. It's supposed to be bigger than just law enforcement. So you can see all the members and our stakeholders that will be assisting us with this program as we go throughout 2022. But it's also the fire department, Animal Services, Keep Longview Beautiful. Some of the things that we'll be doing is Red Cross will be helping with smoke alarms in people's homes. ACO will be assisting with getting animals vaccinated in the area. Parks will be assisting with checking the maintenance and graffiti of anything in the park area, cleaning up the streets, just getting out any trash that's in the area and so forth. So again, it's that holistic approach along with law enforcement, just to improve quality of life in the area. And then also, we want to recognize Luke Altman. He is a newly promoted sergeant with the Longview Police Department, and he has been over our Project Blue Santa for the last couple of years. And as the leader of that, in 2020, even with COVID, he still reached out to 49 families and assisted 142 children with presents at Christmas time. And then this past Christmas for 2021, he and his team assisted 129 families and 325 children, getting gifts for all of them. And he's just done a great job with this project over the last couple of years, and we're very proud of him for that. He got the civic achievement award through the police department. And that's what I have for y'all this evening. Do y'all have any questions for me?
Any questions for Chief Boone? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We have no fire update this evening. I did skip citizen comment. Let me run back and tack that up again. We do have one speaker card, Mr. Larry James Smith.
I want to start my clock so I don't go over three minutes too fast.
It'll beep, don't worry, sir.
Once again, I come to you with a...
Name and address, please, sir.
Beg your pardon, sir.
That's okay.
Larry James Smith. Entrepreneur, entola, nonprofit, mixed-traffic mentoring man. I've been running Longview and trying my best to spread the word that I want to bring a new concept in how to handle and mentor young men from 13 to 35. And Mr. Mayor, I've been trying to have a conversation with you, and I wish you would please help me. Or could I get an appointment tomorrow to have a full scan of my mouth? Because on Monday, all my teeth will be removed because I have cancer in the spine. God will carry me over that. We say the pledge of allegiance. I want to thank you because I'm an Eagle Scout. You know where it led me? 22 years in the military. After two years of college. Keep the good work up. It's good. Longview needs to take the long out and emphasize the love because love is the answer. And I would embrace anyone who wants to talk to me. Sit down with me. Look at my plan. Because I have a bad history, and I tell you my plan that I followed and created myself, it works. Look at me now. I've talked to the chief. I love this man. I'm concerned about it every time I see him. What do I ask you about? Your health. Tell you, I'm concerned about it. Keith, he's like a brother to me because I have bothered him and stayed on him. I said, "Help me. Tell me what I need to do." Which path did I go? I want to do it according to Longview Protestant beliefs because I want to be transparent on what I'm doing. Because when I hit Longview with my program, it's going to work, not for just my race. I'm focusing on all young men from 13 to 35. They need what I learned, what I know will work, and I will really embrace it. Yes, I'm working. I'm not a millionaire. I'm striving. I have downfalls financially, health-wise, but I know this is God's purpose for me, and I will not leave this ground until I see Longview's TV station, 21. They took that away from me. I went to school in that building, elementary. I want to revive it in the South Port of Longview because it has been put on the back burner of progress in Longview. If I can get that open and I run men through that, they will help build that community. No charge because I'm going to get them certified in whatever they want to be certified in, and I want to make sure I pay for it because that's a hand up, not a handout. And they'll have responsibilities because I want to strengthen their weaknesses so they can pass their certification as that hand up. I want to talk with every business owner and say, "Hey, this man has been through my program. You can trust him to do the work." Time's up?
Yes, sir.
I'll be back next time we have council meetings.
We look forward to you. Thank you, sir.
Oh, by the way, I'm running for District 4 Council. I want to sit up there. I want to see what's going on.
Perfect. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
We're now to consent agenda. Were any items council that pulled off for separate discussion? Not may have a motion.
May be approved.
Is there a motion of second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now to presentation item, receive and discuss a presentation from Hub International regarding the Longview Fireman's Relief and Retirement Fund. Gentlemen?
All right. Good evening. Thanks for having us here tonight. My name is Jason Denton. This is...
Scott Leighton.
We are pension actuaries with Hub International in Massachusetts, and we were contracted to take a look at the Fireman's Pension Fund, and we're here to present the results of our analysis. So if we can figure out how this works. Hey. So the first thing we took a look at, right, were every year you get valuation reports from Foster &amp; Foster. The most recent one was as of December 31, 2020. We received valuation data, plan documents, things like that from the city of Longview, nothing from Foster &amp; Foster. And the first thing we did was to go through and prepare a valuation from scratch to see how well our results would match what you get from Foster &amp; Foster. And happy to say that we matched very closely to their results. On one measure, we came within $30,000 on $137 million in pension liability. So very comfortable saying that we agreed with the basic results of their valuation report and the basic conclusions of their report, including the funded status of the plan on the various different schedules that you have to take a look at, and we'll get to those in a second. One of the things we did want to mention as we were going through the valuation report, there's no specific assumptions made for drop retirements from the firefighter's plan. Not that that is an issue with the liability of the valuation, but what it does is when you have a cluster of folks who leave under the drop program all roughly at the same time, it understates the cash flow, that, you know, those drop payments coming out of the plan at any one time. So we did note that, right, you currently, out of the 170 or so active firefighters in the plan, right, 17 of them are currently eligible for retirement. Again, these are all figures as of December 31, 2020. And another 51 members of the force will be eligible to retire within the next 10 years. So you do have more folks coming up for retirement, and that will necessarily mean more cash flow coming out of that plan. And of course, when folks do leave under the drop program, that will, you know, result in more cash coming out of that plan. So that was the valuation in general. Beyond that, the next thing we took a look at was the cost-sharing structure of the plan, right? The current contribution status that the members pay in, that the city pays in. And we wanted to determine whether or not the current contribution structure is satisfactory for benefits being earned under the plan. And we were happy to report back that with the benefits that are currently being earned, they are more than being paid for by the current contribution schedule, right? You have your Tier 1 and Tier 2 folks putting their own money into the plan. The city is putting in 19% of payroll. And for those folks, for future benefits, those contributions do, barring catastrophic losses in the plan, do pay for those benefits and then some. For example, we just threw up this one graph here of a Tier 2 member being hired at age 25, retiring at 58. And you can see the top green line is the contributions being put into the plan. This actually only assumes a 5% asset return just to look at it on a very conservative basis. And the red line shows the value of their benefits, which jump up when they hit retirement age. And then when they hit 55, when they hit 55 and they're eligible for the drop, you see the value of that drop payment, which is the red line, and the normal retirement is that blue line. So again, the contributions that are currently going in are sufficient to pay for future benefits earned under the plan. So the issues that we have aren't being generated by new members coming in. They're not being generated by people earning new service, right? It's a current funding issue based on past service. So when we look at that valuation, the most recent one, right? Plan assets at that time, about $49.5 million. But we've got a couple of measures of liability. The funding liability, which assumes a 7.5% annual return on plan assets. And on that basis, the value of our benefits are $117 million. We're only about 40% funded. Now, as that discount rate, right, I said we're valuing those liabilities at 7.5%. That is projecting forward all of these payments that people are expected to get in the future, right? And the more money we expect to earn in return on our assets, right, the less we need today to pay off these future benefits. So as the discount rate goes down, our liability, the value today of all those future payments increases. The government accounting standards, GASB 68, right, they came into effect a few years ago. And you can see, if you look at the valuation reports for the firefighter's plan, what's happened in those last few years as these GASB rules, the accounting rules have taken place. They force you to value liabilities based on a current market rate. And that market rate has steadily declined over the last handful of years. Again, as that interest rate declines, right, the liability looks larger. So on a government accounting standard, the GASB standard, we're looking at a 2.9% discount rate instead of 7.5. And that's why you see this huge jump in pension liability on that standard. It's at $212 million. We're only 23% funded. So again, the issue here is how do we close that gap? And how do we close that funding hole that currently exists, knowing that future benefits are being paid for? When we look a little bit further and deeper into that valuation report, right, the GASB liability is expected to grow significantly, especially if we don't see interest rates rise in the near future. And if we look at the cash flow of the plan, just looking at 2021, for example, right, the benefit payments are expected to be a little over $7 million. Contributions going into the plan are only about $5 million. So we're over $2 million behind before the year even starts, right? And if asset return isn't enough to generate that $2 million, we're going to fall further back on the funded status. And again, right, we've got a number of people close to retirement, so those expected benefit payments coming out of the plan are expected to increase. By the time we get 10 years from now, we're looking at over $10 million a year coming out of the plan in expected benefit payments. So the bottom line of all of that is that unless we do something and unless there's some changes made, the plan is expected to run out of money within the next 20 years. And that's assuming that we still earn 7.5% interest every year between now and then. Again, as the benefit payments increase, we're going to fall further and further behind, and the plan will eventually run out of money. All right? And that's where we get to the pension obligation bonds.
So one way that many municipalities have been addressing this same sort of issue is through the issuance of a pension obligation bond. Essentially, we are borrowing money at a lower rate in hopes of arbitrage opportunity, investing it at a higher rate of return. It has two impacts. First, it shores up our short-term funding volatility. And second, we are exchanging essentially our future contribution payments for bond repayments. We're deficit financing our liability. We've looked at a couple of different options for the pension obligation bond. We're going to refer to those as cost-neutral, cost-constrained, and full funding. And what we mean by cost-neutral is that if we were to reduce the city's contribution from 19% down to 12%, what type of bond could we have? Or at what rate could we borrow where the payment of that 7% was instead of going into the plan, was going to repay that bond obligation? On a cost-constrained basis, we looked at, instead of reducing the city's contribution from 19 to 12, we instead reduced it from 19 to 14. So we borrowed an additional 2% essentially against that funding cap with a constraint that we don't take or increase our expected annual cost by more than $1 million for any specific year. And on a full funding basis, we did it without regard to cost. What would it take to get the GASB liability to 100%? So looking at those figures, if you think of the first line as the cost-neutral, you could borrow roughly $33 million. Some of this is going to vary based on your actual cost of capital, what the interest rate you'll need to pay on the bond is. That would take your funded status from that 23% on a GASB basis almost to 50% and extend the duration of the fund from roughly 2040, 2041 to 2048. And if you look at the repayment schedule at a 2% corporate or bond issuance, it would be about $1.5 million. Our cost-constrained is somewhere between $43 and $45 million. That was the equivalent of increasing essentially on a net basis the current city contribution to 21 or 21.5%, where we're putting 12 in and paying back the bond with the rest. Again, that will extend the liability or the fund depletion out to more than 50 years, which is what the GASB calculation requires, and improve the funded status to almost 80%. If we're looking to fully fund that liability, we'd have to borrow in excess of $68 million. I know it sounds weird if we say we have $50 million in liability and 212. Why isn't the difference the amount? It's just the nature of the GASB calculation. If we're expected to be sufficiently funded at 7.5, we're allowed to use a discount rate of 7.5. One other consideration, as Jason mentioned earlier, is the cost is going to be largely dependent on what the actual experience of our rate of return is in the investment portfolio. We anticipate, or these calculations are based on a 7.5% rate. Over the last 11 years, the plans earned 7% on average. And for the, going back to 1995, it's been just above 6.5. So what we did, in addition to this discrete formula where we just said, oh, we earn 7.5% every year, when do we run out of money? We also refer to stochastic modeling. We've run 50-year projections 1,000 times so that we can generate some probabilities of when the plan might be exhausted. And it's important to note, we're not assuming a 7.5% return in that scenario. We're assuming a roughly 6.5% return. And what you can see in that graph is those blue bars represent the probability in any given year that the fund is exhausted by then. And that red line, I think it's red, I'm colorblind, is an aggregate percentage. So this is again, without regard to, this is with putting in the $45 million today. So in terms of recommendations?
Yep. So the baseline action, right, the minimum that we would recommend that you do right now, at the very least, would be to cut the city contribution from 19 to 12, to take that 7% of payroll difference and turn that into a bond. So again, all of these things are based on expected payrolls and expected payroll growth and expectation that you'll be able to get a bond at 2% with 30-year repayments. If we take the expected savings of cutting back that 7% payroll for the next 30 years, turning that into an average over the 30 years, right, that's where we get the roughly $1.46 million from, which becomes that $33.3 million bond. Again, it's cost-neutral in aggregate. It's not cost-neutral immediately because you will be expected to pay more than what you would have been expected to pay in the first few years. By the time you get out to the tail end, you're paying less than what you would have been expected to put in at that 19% of payroll, right? Because again, you're turning 7% of an expected growing payroll into a flat-line 30-year bond repayment. Okay? That is the absolute minimum that we recommend. But even with that $33 million, on most scenarios, the plan still runs out of money before 30 years is up. So before the bond is repaid, under the majority of scenarios, again, the plan runs out of money before 2052. The recommendation is that we go to $45.6 million. This is, the constraint here was that the cost in year one would not be more than $1 million above what you're already expected to put in, right? So in year one, this bond costs the city 19% of payroll plus $1 million. Again, by the time we get out to year 30, you're paying less than 19% of payroll because you're still saving, right, that 7% of pay each year. You're cutting your contribution to the plan back to 12 and replacing it with that flat-line bond repayment. With the $45.6 million bond, right, on a discrete basis, if we assume 7.5% return each year, the bond lifetime gets extended through the full 50-year projection, so out to at least 2071. If we assume only 7% return, we still get the bond expected to survive through, sorry, the funds to survive through the 30-year bond repayment period. GASB status under this jumps from 23 to roughly 82%. Again, on the negative side, sort of the same things, right? When we're borrowing a whole bunch of money and putting it in right now, the biggest concerns are that we get some serious negative asset returns in the first couple of years. That would have, you know, a significant detrimental effect to putting the money in. And there's also, right, what the actual asset return is, is kind of the biggest variable over the next 30 years of the lifetime of this bond. Once we lock in that bond repayment, what actually happens in our investment return is going to have a significant impact on how well or not so well the plan does with this cash infusion. On the aggressive side, right, would be something higher than $45.6 million, up to, again, that top-end number was $68.3 million. again, that top-end number was $68.3 million. The 45.6, again, was based on a very specific constraint, right? We're going to cut contributions back to 12, but the total cost with the bond is going to be roughly 21, 21.5% of pay, right? And we're limiting that first-year cost increase to $1 million. If the budget allows for more than that, then you could borrow more than, right, the 45.6. But again, the 45.6 was the most we can do with the constraints that we were working If you can do a little more, it would be recommended up to the $68 million level, though, is actually going to, I mean, we think it's way too high. There's no need, as we've said, right, future benefits are paying for themselves and then some. So there's no need to be at 100% funded today because we know that future people coming into the plan are helping to fill in that funding gap. All of that being said, do you have the clicker? We go to the next slide here.
Yep. The other thing, I think, just to conclude about the pension obligation bond, what's important is, you know, why is this only extending the life of the plan by X number of years when we're putting all this money in? To make a metaphor, if you think about your mortgage, if you instead looked at your mortgage and said it's, you know, $1,500 a month, I'm going to borrow the next 10 years' worth of mortgage payments, and I'm going to put it against my mortgage today, but I'm not going to make a mortgage payment now. Well, roughly 10 years from now, you're going to be in about the same place. You're going to be in a slightly better position because you didn't have as much interest, but you're not going to be 10 years better. You know, you might have reduced the payments by, you know, a few dollars. So what we're really doing is replacing money that would be going into the fund, and instead, that money is going to pay back the bond for the money that we put in the fund. And again, timing is very important and how that's invested. If we had done this three weeks ago and invested in the market and saw a 10% correction, you know, right off the bat, that, you know, that can have a really deleterious effect on this. That said, why we wouldn't recommend going much higher than the 45 million is we believe that the pension obligation bond is just a necessary first step. What we're trying to do is stop the bleeding, shore up the funding until we can take a breath, see how that's worked, and what the next steps are. So the right initial bond amount is not likely to be enough to eliminate the funding concerns going forward. And if you were to borrow sufficiently, that $68 million, you make reference to the last side, it could be, it could be too much. You could end up in a scenario where the plan's dramatically overfunded. So this is something we recommend that you continue to monitor on some sort of regular basis, annual, biannual. Continue to do these types of forecasts to determine how much the bond has impacted the fund's longevity, and then identify need for further action on a one-off basis as the committee sees fit. And again, I think the other thing we would recommend, not specifically the Longview plan, but with any plan, is an independent investment review, just in terms of where the asset liability model is and what the right asset allocations are. You know, throughout this process, one of the questions we asked ourselves was, do we really want to go out and borrow money as a bond to then put it in the plan to invest in bonds? Right? So I think that's got to be one of the considerations as well. So if there's any questions, we'd be happy to take those.
Yes, sir. I think there's going to be some questions. Can I ask you, just, I'm just curious, in y'all's, all the things that you all did, in your view of our pension fund, did you all find any evidence of where the fund has been mismanaged or we should have done something differently at some point in time?
Sure. The primary scope of our engagement was forward-looking. Having said that, we did do, you know, a fairly thorough review of the plan itself. And I think we'd be comfortable, you know, with the following statements, that, one, the changes to the plan's benefit formula and the changes to the contribution rate were both designed towards the end goal of improving the plan's funded status. And while we put up that 7% return was just factual, and over the last 10 or 11 years, that aggregate return is largely consistent with similarly invested portfolios for our other pension clients. So, you know, there wouldn't be anything that jumped off the page at us that was done, you know, incorrectly.
So when, as you referred to the, you know, we did those incremental steps that we thought with the last people that told us what we should be doing, incremental steps, the four-year deals that we did, four steps for us, four steps for firefighters. So there was no negligence there. That was what we thought would do the right thing, but it just didn't. Is that correct?
I think even back, I mean, I wasn't, I'm not familiar with exactly what was done or why it was recommended in that step. Part of this is the nature of where we are today in the market. Things are out beyond our control, where interest rates are. So lower the interest rate, the higher the liability. In addition, the lower the interest rate, the lower yield we're receiving on our fixed income investments. The market is largely out of our control. Having said that, on a prospective basis, you know, looking at what we have, we don't think this is likely to repeat itself. You know, if we were to start the plan today with the current cost sharing, I think we'd be in great shape. What we have is some legacy benefits that are very expensive, and we have cash flow issues, specifically with drop plan benefits where they're unpredictable, and a substantial amount of money can come out of the plan at any given time. And what we're trying to do is catch up with that funding. And it's not unique to the City of Longview. I mean, this is being addressed by municipalities and even, you know, at the state and local level all over the country.
Yeah. And it's unfortunate, but it's the fact. And you guys have done a phenomenal job. I know you spent a lot of time doing this, and I appreciate it very much. And, you know, your recommendations are, obviously, we have to take those into consideration because just like the previous recommendations that we received, that we thought when we did it, we would be saying, great job, we did a good job. Your recommendations are the same thing. We're hoping that what you're telling us will come to fruition, but there's no guarantees here, are there?
Absolutely not.
And I think that's a key takeaway, is that, you know, the, there is no, right, I mean, the reality of the world is, right, we all have budgets to work within. And, you know, if we didn't have to worry about, you know, the financial impact, right, we'd be able to solve everything today without a problem, right? But reality is that there are certain budget constraints that you have to work within. And in those budget constraints, you know, there really isn't a single silver bullet, right? And so there are certain steps that you can take to shore things up as much as possible today. And then really, it's just a matter of keeping an eye on it and, you know, being vigilant about what's going on with the plan. As we said with all of these bonds, right, we're replacing what's expected to be kind of a growing percentage of payroll contribution partially with a flat bond repayment. And so over time, right, the amount of money that the city would be contributing to the plan as a percentage of pay is going to diminish, right, over that 30-year period. Well, that doesn't mean we set this tomorrow and then walk away from it for 30 years and then look back. You know, there's no reason why 10 years from now, if the contribution rate has fallen, you know, over those 10 years, there's no reason why you couldn't say, you know, things aren't looking quite as good as we'd like to. Maybe we'll take this, you know, sort of savings and put that into a smaller bond offering 10 years from now. Or we'll put this in as additional contributions on an annual sort of, you know, basis as we agree that we've got the money in the budget to do a little more. Those types of things are things that we're going to want to continuously look at as the solution evolves.
Because, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, I think that, and we'd be happy to rerun these one. We know what the actual cost of borrowing is. But I think at a minimum, there's an arbitrage opportunity available. We can borrow at a lower rate than we can be expected to earn in the market over a longer period of time. So having that money in becomes, by definition, cost-neutral in the aggregate and helps shore up the funding. We'd rather have $30 million in the plan today than we would putting in that bond payment as a contribution. That's sort of the baseline recommendation, if we can work within budget constraints, to increase that bond amount, that's where we stand. But I think it's important, to your point, is it's, this isn't a silver bullet. It's not guaranteed to fix it. In fact, we don't think that borrowing 30 or 40 million will be the beginning and end of this issue. That at some point, we're going to have to look again and see where we are. And whether or not it is, is largely beyond our control. If the market cooperates, we're going to do really well. If it doesn't cooperate, we're not.
And I think that's the point we have to drive home, is that we, there are things that are going to be out of our control, no matter what we do. No matter how much money we put in there, there are things that are out of our control, just like there have been over the last number of years, that we cannot, I mean, if we could predict that, none of us would be sitting right here. We'd be sitting on the beach somewhere with those umbrella drinks, you know. So I appreciate what you all have done, and I know there'll be other questions. Council, please, feel free. Who would like to ask? Anybody have a question? Shirley? Mr. Wright?
So y'all are expecting that we'll make, or you're assuming that we're going to make 7.5% on our money, which is more than we've made in the last 10 or 20 years or whatever it is, correct?
That is the assumption that we inherited from the, and that's what's being used right now for the GASB basis, so that's what we proceeded with.
Okay. But is that very realistic, do you think?
I mean, we're not investment advisors, so I mean, I would defer to those folks on that regard. I think it's probably, I don't think the 7.5% is unreasonable when you look at what your peer group would be using for assumptions for the same calculations.
And the other thing, you're looking at getting a 2% bond. I know you're just, you're saying, well, I think we can get a 2% bond, but now with the Fed saying we're going to have these four or five bumps this year.
Yeah.
What's that going to do?
Yeah, to your point, and, you know, we volunteer to do this, you know, as part of this engagement, you know, not additional charges for this, but if you come back to us and say, our actual cost of capital isn't 2, it's 3.25%. And instead of using 12, 31, 20, 20 information, by the time this offering comes up, we have another year of information because we had some favorable returns in the market last year. We can reprice that and say, okay, the right number isn't 33.3, it's 30.1 or it's 35. We can update that pretty quickly.
And who's going to invest this money? Would we use our, the same people we're using right now to invest, which I think, is our fireman's fund or?
Yeah, the money would become part of the fireman's trust, correct?
Okay.
So what controls would the city have with that money if it was given to the fireman's fund?
So in terms of, in terms of control over the investments, I think it would be part of the same pool of assets that's invested now, so it would be under the same control that it is now, whatever those controls are internally.
To the extent, though, if you're talking specifically about, you know, if we do this bond offering and inject a significant amount of money into the plan, right, we'd want some assurances that maybe certain things on the benefit side, right, aren't going to get changed during the, I mean, that's obviously out of the purview of what we were doing and would be something that you would have to work out with, you know, with the firefighters.
You have other questions or comments? Yes, sir.
At the end of the day, whichever route we choose, it has to be repaid. Fair assumption?
Yes.
And that's the, you know, as the mayor said earlier, you know, based on the numbers, I mean, this is the, you know, the hand that we've got. And then, you know, not looking or looking at what that does to the impact of the budget for future years, which, you know, just is, it's just always hanging out there that, you know, we've got to pay it back.
Yeah, and I think that's why we started with that, that cost-neutral approach, was that, you know, there are no free lunches, so to speak, and that if, but we would be better off from a planned finance perspective, at least on a projected basis, to replace contributions, would-be contributions that were going in with a bond repayment so that we can essentially finance this liability with a fixed rate, as opposed to a variable rate right now being wherever interest rates move and whatever our asset return is.
Yes, sir.
This is maybe a Jim question, but does this require voter approval?
Oh, yeah. This should be a voter-approved bond.
Right.
Correct, Jim?
My understanding, due to the fact that the rollback comes into play.
Right, it's more than 3%.
That it would require an election.
Yes. Yeah, we, it needs to be. This needs to be something that we, if we go this route and take to the voters. This is, you know, their money. It's our money, it's all of our money.
I did want to make a comment, and I should say, Ms. Tim, just at the end of the day, you know, the City of Longview is going to be responsible for that, whether we stick our head in the sand now or we choose to make a hard decision and put it to the voters to consider handling it. I was not excited to get your recommendations, which said there is no option that doesn't include a bond. It is just how much of a bond are you going to consider? That was disappointing, honestly, to me, no offense. And I did want to just briefly talk about the steps that we have taken since 2012 because I think that's important. What we're talking about is a big deal. You know, council's vote to put this on a bond election is a big deal, and I do want to talk about that from a voter perspective, just to show the steps that we have been diligently taking during that time. I know, you know, sitting on the fire pension board since 2014, this is not news to me, but, you know, for those that don't see it every month, it is certainly probably surprising and upsetting, and I understand that. But since 2012, both the city and the firefighters have taken steps to increase contributions on both sides and decrease benefits. Both sides have been actively working on that and taking almost annual steps since that time. So, you know, it's easy in hindsight to look back and think, should we have done more? Could we have done more? But we were diligently meeting between the pension bond and the city to look at what those things should be. And every year, we expected it to look a better picture. But I think that that only goes to show, we've taken those steps, we've done the due diligence. This is the point we're at, and this is the hard decision we have to make. But, you know, it's our job to make those hard decisions. It's our job to make financially prudent decisions, which I think you've just shown us. It makes more financial sense to consider a bond than it does for us to increase the contributions that we would have to just from the city side, putting money into it. So from a taxpayer perspective, we want to be responsible with those funds. And at the end of the day, those are the funds that are going to be used to pay those retirements, and we just want to do it in a prudent way. And of course, everybody up here wants to support our first responders. So that is really, this is really tough. But I did want to just provide some perspective that we have been diligently working on it. This is not, you know, the first time that it's been considered, and I think we've done everything that we could do up until this point, so.
Yeah, and I think it's important, too, that, you know, I know we wish we could have more attractive options, and my parents long ago dissuaded me from the idea that something was okay because everyone else was doing it. But this is, this is the solution right now that is most popular and being used most often by municipalities are in the same position. And this isn't an issue of mismanagement, it's largely of demographics, and it's not unique to Longview. It's demographics of the country, that we've got an aging workforce. Earlier in the presentation, Jason showed, there's almost 70 folks who are either eligible now or will be eligible in the coming decade for retirement. And that's, that's a representation of the United States as general. And when we went back to that graph of the benefit accruals, they get really expensive late in the game. So we might have had the right cost structure for a younger workforce, but as it gets older, as a lot of pension plans are finding out, those late-career accruals are super expensive, and we haven't been helped out by the discount rate environment that's largely been, not, it's completely outside of our control, but, you know, we can argue over who's responsible for that, but that hasn't helped at all.
And the changes in GASB has made also has, you can say how you want it. It makes our fund look worse, but the fund is still what it is. It's a bad fund. It's not doing what we want it to do. It doesn't matter what parameters you use, the bottom line is, it's a fund that needs rescuing, and it's sooner or later, you're going to have to rescue it. And, you know, it's a pill we all are going to have to swallow sooner or later. We can continue to kick it down the road, but it's not going to give me, but it's going to get worse. And the worse it gets, then the more attention it's going to require. But, you know, it's, it's, we appreciate you guys doing it, you know, you, we hired you to do this. We hired you to give us your opinion, and that's what you've done. You've given us your opinion, and we appreciate that because you all have spent a lot of time doing this. So thank you very much for your service to the community.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Anyone else have anything?
I would just like to make a comment because, I mean, some of this is as clear as mud to me.
Where's Ed, we need him.
But what I'm hearing is that this pretty much is going to be a, once again, a temporary fix. Is there a long-term fix for this down the road? You're saying 50 years?
I mean, we, it's tough to, any, any projection beyond is only as good as the data that goes in. So it's predicting the future is very difficult. We do make assumptions about, you know, who's going to replace the workers that are coming in, what age, what salaries they'll earn, how long they'll stay. So, you know, any deviation from any of that is going to change these. So I think, you know, we do the best with the information that we can. With that, there is no magic, again, no magic bullet, no silver bullet, and I think it's something that we need to look at with some frequency. If we put in $30 million into the plan and we have great investment million dollars into the plan, and we have great investment return for a three-year period, we might be in a very different situation three years from now than we are today. If we put in, if we had put in thirty million dollars three weeks ago and lost ten percent of it, that might, you know, have yet another different scenario. So a lot of it's going to be beyond our control, and I think that's why we don't want to make big moves, borrow to get to a hundred percent, because that doesn't guarantee it either, and we could end up still being out of money, or we could end up with, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars in excess in the plan. We want to make the right moves at the right time, based on the best information we have.
One thing I did want to add, that I think speaks to your question, that you guys said, but I wanted to highlight, just one of the changes that the firefighters voted on to create the Tier Two, now our new hires are funding themselves, they're actuarially sound, so we're not continuing the problem. You know, there are things in place that will help with that. And one of the things that the board talked about was having an MOU in place, so that if this is something that the community considers, that we would have an agreement in regards to, I think Steve was kind of bringing that up earlier, you know, no changes to benefits. So if we're going to take this big step on our side as far as contribution from the city, then we would have an agreement that there wouldn't be changes as far as increasing benefits or doing other things, so that we could feel confident that this was not going to be something that got worse.
Right. Yeah, this is absolutely a legacy benefit issue, as opposed to something ongoing.
Mayor, I heard a couple of things that were thinker upon us, and I think we need to look at it annually.
Oh, absolutely.
I don't, I don't, I'm, I'm not even going three years, I'm saying this is.
Well, the pension, I mean, we meet monthly, and we have an actuarial study every year.
I'm going back to the council.
Yeah. We did an update, I think, two years ago. So sure, yeah, that would be a good suggestion, I think.
Any, any information we can gain is just information that we can gain. It helps us make more clear, concise decisions. There's nothing, there's, never give us too much information to deal with. We can all process that information and make educated decisions and do what's best for the community. That's what our, that's our job to do that.
You know, in hindsight, too, Mayor, is that the fund survived nine eleven, it survived COVID.
They didn't help us.
That's what I'm saying.
COVID killed, COVID, COVID and the drop in the stock market and the presidential elections and politics and the wars, that's what has driven our funds so far now, it's almost unrecoverable. But we, none of us could control any of those things, and it's unfortunate. But every, almost every pension plan in the country took the same hits that we're hitting.
Oh, and their numbers are a lot bigger than ours.
All of them, yeah. So, you know, that's unfortunate, but that's a lot, that's the country we live in right now, so we can't control those things. Thank you, gentlemen, we appreciate you very much.
Thank you.
You've been a world of help for us.
Thank you.
Anything else, counsel, on this issue? We'll obviously be coming back very soon with, with something else on that. We're not out of the community interest. We'll start with you, Mr. Carpenter.
I'm good, Mayor, thank you.
Ms. Snoddy.
Nothing for me.
Mrs. Shahar.
Nothing for me.
Mr. Wade is not here tonight, can we have a motion to excuse Mr. Wade?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Mr. Wright?
Nothing tonight.
Mr. Bertle?
Nothing for me.
Okay, I have a few things that we need to do. First, I would like to, Chief Bishop, Chief Bishop's still here. Chief Bishop and Keith, I would like both of you all to come to the front, if you would.
Being that tonight is both of you all's last meetings, I just want to take a moment to tell you how much we appreciate you, and what you've meant to the city of Longview, and the sacrifices that you all have made, and the time and effort you've put in to make this a better city. And we could go on and on, and you deserve on and on, but you guys know how I feel about you both. I appreciate you both, I love you both, and I thank you for what you've done for me as a mayor, and for this council, and the guidance and direction you've given, every step of the way that we've leaned upon you. We've leaned upon you big, and you all have responded big, as always, and I appreciate you more than you know, and I wish you both the ultimate best in what you do from this point forward, and know that we're going to miss you, but you deserve where you are, and I appreciate you both. I want to present both of y'all with the key to the city. Keith, is your key to the city. Chief, is your key to the city?
Thank you.
You both deserve that, and Keith, here's your picture, don't hang it back anywhere you replace, you must take that home and do something with it. But, we really, really, really thank you guys, and, and you, you've really exemplified what we want in the city of Longview personnel. Thank you so much, sir. Thank you so much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
It is a key to pick up, go try to, one of those ones out there somewhere. Just only about seeing you and Chief.
Okay, I have a few more items here. First, I want to say congratulations to some lobos that'll all, that'll, we have three Longview High School graduates who'll be playing for a trip to the Super Bowl this, next week. One of them, or maybe two of them, will actually play in the Super Bowl. It's, it's amazing that we have Trent Williams, J. Michael Hasty, and Trayvon, Trayvon Howard, all playing this weekend against each other, and one or two of them will advance onto the Super Bowl. So congratulations to these young men that have gone up through our system and our community, and they represent us well, and they, they make us proud. So best of luck to all of them. Also, the Homeless Resource Day was held today, a point-in-time count date at the Longview Exhibit Center. We had our first event back in 2018, we weren't able to do it last year, but I'm excited to see it come back again this year. I want to thank so, so many people who volunteered, donors who helped make this event possible, it just, the list is, the list is exhausting. But Laura Hill, you always work hard and coordinate this event, and we appreciate you so much. The Longview Convention Complex, Longview Transit Partners in Prevention, the Longview Housing Authority, Community Development, Environmental Health, Longview Public Library, the Longview Police Department, the post officer, Chris Birdsong, Longview Fire Department, Longview Animal Care and Adoption Center, Municipal Court, Development Services, Code Compliance, Public Works, Meeting Tourism, with community support from Good Shepherd, Longview Regional, Alpine Church of Christ, Overton Brooks VA from Shreveport, Hospital students from Longview ISD and New Diana, nursing students from Lauteran University and UT Tyler, and more than forty other agencies. We just thank you for your support in this, and, and changing lives and helping people who need it in the worst way. So thank you for, for that. It's, it's really, really special to see us come together and do things like that. After our last meeting, I probably had more phone calls and more communication with residents of Longview than I have in a lot of meetings. It's, it's amazing how many people actually watch this, and I'm glad that they do. But I want to just talk about a few things that, that were brought up, that we need to make clear, and, and concerns that, that we need to meet with the citizens. First off, I want to talk about the reorganization impact by these funds, because I, I know that there was a couple of questions about not being able to follow the, the trail, and I want to make it as simple as I can make it, so that we all understand, I want the citizens to understand exactly what took place, so that we, we see this. If you look, the general fund, we had a savings of a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars, and that's from the original fund of, you can see the numbers, if you subtract those numbers, that's where that comes from. The biggest change is the removal of Keith's salary, which was entirely in the general fund. Moving forward, instead of Rollin's salary being solely in the general fund, a portion of his salary will be in the water fund. Rollin has had, has been and very likely will continue to be intimately involved with the Public Works Department, and the water fund in particular. So it's a, it's a shifting of funds, but what it does, it creates a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars in the general fund, which is the one fund in the community that we strive and struggle with the most every year, to find ways to do things with. So to find a hundred and forty-two thousand in that fund by moving it to another fund is good for that general fund, that's where that money comes from. So just so we, we understand that. The water fund, okay, the water fund, you see a slight reduction there, as the allocation is changing in the Public Works Department, and also a vacant entry-level water service representative position was eliminated, okay? So there's where the water fund savings of nine thousand dollars came. Informational Technology, a thirty thousand dollar increase, an increase here is includes increased allocation from the Assistant City Manager, which will oversee this department. The risk management of sixty-eight thousand, primary difference here is the increase to accommodate the hiring of a risk manager. Bonnie Hubbard has been the HR and Risk Manager as Director of Administration, she'll continue to serve and function of the, of the HR manager. Sanitation, you can see a forty thousand dollar increase, excuse me, yes. Sanitation change allocations are to match responsibilities primarily related to Public Works, Dwayne Archer, given his experience, Dwayne will continue to be very involved in sanitation moving forward. Fleet Services, forty thousand dollar savings, you change allocation to match responsibilities, reducing the allocation of Dwayne Archer, but increasing the allocation to Kevin Schumley. CVB, sixteen thousand dollar increase, related to creation of a Director of Community Destinations positions. And then the grants, twenty-one thousand, allocation changes for Director of Community Services and the Assistant City Manager. So I know, I know it's still a lot of numbers and a lot of money, but that's where the changes are, and that's where the savings come from. But what I want to try to reiterate to the public is this, the overall savings to our organization, total, all in, all done, is fifteen thousand dollars, which doesn't seem like a whole lot of money on a hundred and seventy million dollar budget, but it's still a fifteen thousand dollar savings with this reallocation and reorganization of, of individuals. Plus, we're one employee less than we were before the reorganization. So that's about as simple as I can make it. I don't know how else to do it, but that's as simple as I can see it. But the bottom line is, we save fifteen thousand dollars, we have one less employee, and the general fund is saving a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars, which we can certainly use in that fund more than any other fund in, in, in the organization. So I just want that to be, I want it to be clear, oh, does that make it clear to anybody else? I mean, it helped me a lot. Does it, okay, just, just so we know, okay? So, okay. The second thing, we, we brought up a really important topic, I think, in our city, and that's the, the minority statistical comparison. And I think that's something that we need to bring up, and we need to have at the forefront. And, and I, and I, and we have charged our city manager with, with addressing this situation, because it's our job to do that. But this is where I had probably a number of calls. We, we want to make it known that minorities in our community, in the workforce, basically mean any non-white male, that becomes a minority, whether it's African-American, Hispanic, Asian, Middle Eastern, women, those are all minorities in our workforce. And so we need to be cognizant of all the minorities that we can help to have a pathway that's clear and defined, for all minorities to excel and advance within our organization, because that's what we should be doing. That's our job as elected officials, and this, and we've given the charge of the city manager to do that. We don't want any of our employees going other places. We want to grow them from within, and, and promote them from within. But it's also important to, to know that if they want to bring in diversity faster than we can grow them through our ranks, which may be, may be something we have to look at, if we can't grow them fast enough through our own ranks, and we want to bring in diversity, which we should look at that, we have to pay competitive salaries, because nobody's going to come here and lose money. Nobody's going to come to Longview if they don't have a competitive salary to be equal to where they could go someplace else. We want them to come here with a competitive salary and, and be part of Longview. It's, it's interesting to me that our total city employment is nine hundred and twenty-two employees. Forty-eight percent right now are minorities, all, all the minorities that I listed, forty-eight percent. We have twenty-six percent African-American, two hundred and forty-two out of nine hundred and twenty-two employees are African-American. Our city leadership's team, managing directors, we have forty percent minority, twenty-three of fifty-seven. Our entire leadership team, including white males and females and all minorities, we have ninety-three percent that are promoted from within, fifty-one of fifty-five promoted from within, with two currently vacant spots. So I think it's important that we know these things, but that we also address them every opportunity that we have to make sure we're doing our part to do what's right for all people. And, and that should be our, our jobs. And I appreciate that being brought up, and I think it needs to be clarified that we, that is our job, and I, and I, and I think we need to be very conscious of that. There are a few other things that were brought up, I just want to make sure that I can clarify. There were some numbers brought up that, that I want to, I don't want people to think that, that, I want to know the actual numbers. First off, when it comes to our employees, we do not compete with Dallas and Sherman, we, we don't. That's not who we compete with. People who want to live in Dallas, and Houston, and San Antonio, they want to go there because they want a different life that they can have in a small town. So we're competing against cities that are our demographics, our size, our, the things that we offer, and the things that we can put up. That's who we compete with. And so we want to be competitive in those areas, when, when we're trying to gain and maintain and keep employees in our, in our, in our city, because I think that's the most important thing we do is, I'm, I personally feel like, in my business, I want to grow from within, because they know my culture, they know my, my habits, they know what was expected, they know those things. When I, when I come from that, I got to start at ground zero, I got to start all over. It's more expensive, it's more time-consuming to train someone who doesn't know what's going on, and that's difficult for me. But those are just decisions that we all will have to make in, in the coming months. But I, I don't want us to get hung up in comparing things that aren't comparable. We, we are elected officials up here, okay? The county elected officials, those are elected officials also. They know the salary that they're getting paid going in. There, there's no, they, they want that, they're going in as elected officials. That's a whole different ballgame than employees that work for the city of Longview, or employees that work for the county of Gregg, or the employees that work for the school districts. Those are not comparable. You can't compare a city or county employee with an elected official, because we know what we get coming in. I, I, I mean, just for instance, our total elected official salary from all of us up here is twenty-two thousand dollars a year. That's what all seven of us, twenty-two thousand dollars. The county's total elected officials is five hundred and nine thousand dollars. But there's a difference. Those are full-time employees, that, that's a full-time job for them. Ours is not a full-time job. Ours is not meant to be a full-time job. Our full-time jobs are these gentlemen sitting here and the lady sitting back there that do the work in our city. We're not full-time employees, so you cannot compare apples to oranges. It's, it's not, it's not an appropriate comparison. I, I just don't want us to get hung up on things that aren't equal for our community, because I think our employees are our biggest asset. Our employees are an asset, and the citizens are our bosses. And we need to keep that designation really clear, how, how we do that. I just don't want us to, to lose sight of what our, our focus is. So please understand that we, we want our employees to stay here, we want them to thrive here, we want them to grow and come up through and be leaders and do what we, what we expect them to do, and we want to encourage them all along the way. So that's what I would like to see us do, and I know we've given that charge to our city manager, and I know he's going to take that and run with it. So with that, oh, oh, wait, 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 one more thing. Keith, yes, you have one more option?
I do.
Yes, please.
Well, as you is all aware, tonight is my last city council meeting, and I, I have one more official act to do before my retirement begins. And before that, one of the, one of the last things I'm going to do is attend Mike Bishop's retirement reception tomorrow afternoon. I hope all of you can join me. It's been a pleasure to work with Chief Bishop, and I couldn't have asked for a better police chief. I would like to thank him for everything he's done for Longview, and he has been a strong advocate for community-focused policing, and I appreciate that. I'm also especially grateful that Chief Bishop has a passion for training and educating the next generation of officers and leaders. And as you may know, Chief Bishop has accepted a full-time position at Tyler Junior College, a place where he's served as an adjunct professor for many years. His dedication to training and preparing those around him is evident within our police department. And under his leadership, the department launched our own police academy to train new recruits, and likewise, he has taken time to develop officers to be prepared to lead the department following his departure. So one of my last duties as city manager is my pleasure to name Assistant Police Chief Anthony Boone to the role of Acting Police Chief. Anthony has served as the assistant since 2015, and he has been with our department since 2001. And since that time, his experience includes many aspects of the department, including support services, criminal investigation, special operations, SWAT, and patrol. He has a master's degree in criminal justice, and has participated in several advanced professional development programs, including programs offered through the Secret Service, the FBI, and Law Enforcement Management Institute, Texas. So everyone knows that in Longview, the city manager is responsible to recommend the hiring of director-level positions, such as the chief, but the hiring is subject to city council approval. However, the city manager has the authority to directly appoint director-level positions, such as the chief, but the hiring is subject to city council approval. However, the city manager has the authority to directly appoint director-level positions, such as the chief, but the hiring However, the city manager has the authority to directly appoint director-level position on an acting or an interim basis, and that's what we'll be doing tonight. And so in the coming months, newly appointed city manager, Rollin McPhee, will work with you to determine a process and a timeline for permanently filling the police chief position, and I am confident that Anthony Boone will be an effective and capable leader for the department and the community during this time of transition and beyond. So congratulations, Chief Boone, and congratulations, Chief Bishop, on your retirement. Once again, I would like to thank the city council and my fellow employees and residents of Longview for allowing me to serve as your manager, and I appreciate, certainly appreciate all the kind words and gifts I received at my retirement reception last week, and everyone knows I was born and raised in the Longview area, and, and I plan to spend my retirement here as well, and Longview is home, so definitely be seeing me around, but just not as often in City Hall, so, thanks again, appreciate it.
And with that, we are, we are retired. Thank you, sir. Thank you.